Thank you for attending the September regular meeting of the Groton RTM. The time now is 7:08. We've got to adjust that back clock because that thing's a little slow. Daylight savings is coming, guys. I'll turn it over to Town Clerk for roll call, please.
Okay. Representative Adams. Burrell. Casper. Dean Shinbra. DeGraffinright.
Here.
Fritchie. Fox. Frickman. Gardner A. Gardner M. Gibbs. Hume. Cadden. Linder. Luck. Massett.
Here.
Matter. McElroy. Norman. Aubrey.
Here.
Pirella. Powers K. Powers S. Pulaski. Swindell.
Here.
Amrits.
Here.
B.C. Williams. Wells. Whitney. And Moderator.
I'm here. I've got 22. All right. So we have 22 members present. I declare a quorum, so we may begin our deliberations. If we can all go to Agenda Item B, moment of silence, salute to the flag, if you could please rise, remove your caps. There's a... Yep, the only... Oh, there's two flags. There's one over here and one behind you, so take your pick. Representative Burrell, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. Pledgeions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We're on to Agenda Item C, approval of minutes from the August 13, 2025 meeting. They were in your packet. If there are any additions, revisions, omissions, deletions, and so on, otherwise, we're going to approve these minutes. Are there any of those items that need to be revised and added or removed? All right. Seeing none, the minutes will be approved. Thank you. All right. Item D, public petitions. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to no more than five minutes or less, as directed by the moderator, and, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be made by the moderator and/or by the town manager, and if individuals should state their name and address for the record. And if you wish to speak virtually, register by emailing council@groton-ct.gov, no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Did we have anybody online that wishes to speak?
No.
All right. Let it be noted that we have Representative Pirella here, so we have 23 members present. All right. So with that, we will go to our signup sheet. I have Patricia Weaver. Come on over here.
Good evening, members of the RTM. My name is Patricia Weaver. I've lived in Groton since 2001. I was on the RTM, not this session, but the prior session. I advocated for the opioid funds to get received from the town. We had a deadline to receive. The opioid funds have... Once we get them, we have the funds for a period of 18 years on an annual basis. Now, we have two other streams of revenue. We also have the cannabis taxes, and we also have the NIP taxes. So these are three streams of revenue that the town of Groton is going to get on an ongoing, continual basis. And just to let you know, at the prior RTM, there's specific distribution criteria for the cannabis funds as well as the opioid funds. The opioid funds are supposed to be used for prevention, education, and treatment. They're supposed to be used for all age groups. The cannabis funds are supposed to be used for education as well, to be distributed to our police force for Narcan distribution. What I had advocated for previously in the previous cycle is we have... We are very blessed in Groton to have several organizations that help with addiction and recovery. Addiction and recovery also has comorbid problems such as homelessness and domestic violence, so we have organizations that help as well. When I was seated on the RTM, I was told back then that we were going to vet a process, kind of like the ARPA funds, to have all applicable organizations have an opportunity to vet for the funds. Back then, I believe Community Speaks Out received... I have no problem with them. I think they're an excellent organization, but they don't do it alone, and the funds do not stay in Groton. They use to other places like New London and Norwich as well, so our funds are going elsewhere to other organizations. In fact, when they just had the Recovery Day in New London, they mentioned Recovery 12 Solutions, St. Vincent's de Paul in Norwich, the Phoenix, Connecticut, all hands on deck, Overdog Dose Action Team, NLC Cares, Community for Addiction, Alliance for Living, Legite Health District, Reliance Health. They recognize them and they help them, and they are the... But right now, Community Speaks Out is the sole recipient of the funds. What I'm... There was a decision made at the committee of the whole meeting and at the last town council meeting that the cannabis funds thankfully are going to be distributed to other organizations that have received funds in the past and opened up to new organizations. The cannabis funds, I mean, the opioid funds were going to be distributed for the next three years, again, to Community Speaks Out. I don't have a problem. It's just that, even in this building, we have an overflow from New London. When the hospitality center is overflowing this summer, this building here allowed people to take showers. They gave them food. We have Carrying Meals that distributes food. We have meal distributions on Monday and Wednesday. These other organizations run in donations as well. What I'm asking, to make sure I cover it completely in this particular... What I'm asking is for the RTM to consider vetoing the vote and sending it back to the... Vetoing the resolution and sending it back to the town council so that they can do a fair and equitable distribution of these funds, because there is no deadline on these funds' distribution. And I just think it would be, like, for instance, Malta, Community of Hope, Safe Futures, Carrying Meals. We have so many organizations that can have these funds and to participate. And rather than having one organization receive them and vet them to other organizations, other organizations should be able to receive them directly. And just so you know, I asked Joe directly. Community Speaks Out, when we think of addiction in the area, gets all of their donations from, like, Chelsea Groton Bank and from our car dealerships, and everybody just thinks that they're their end-all, be-all. But so many communities aren't blessed like ours with other organizations that pitch in and help. And here in Groton, we do not have a New London Hospitality Center. In fact, as part of our annual budget, we give the New London Hospitality Center $25,000 a year. I'm just asking the RTM to open up their line of thinking, because we're blessed with this new stream of revenue. Between the three streams of revenue, it comes out to a quarter of a million dollars a year. And I just don't think we should put all of our eggs in one basket, because in addiction, sometimes people make mistakes. And if your only string to getting help is one liaison, and you break ties with them, you break ties with everything. So I just think we need to, especially in this economic time, give money to other organizations. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. That is all that I had listed for signups. Is there anyone else that's in the audience that would like to speak? I cannot recognize you per our rules. We do not recognize ex officio members during this public comment, but you are more than free and willing to speak at any other agenda item. Thank you. Mr. Dela Cruz.
Joe Dela Cruz, 95 Cory Road. I just wanted to address a couple of things. We're going to sit in front of you today, and you're going to have... Be asked to vote. Take a vote on money that... I think if it was framed the way the last speaker would say, that it doesn't seem fair. It doesn't... I would just want to walk you through a little history of the money. Four years ago, when we first were aware that this money was going to start coming this way, you know, we kind of presented the town council with a plan, and the plan was to get a building. The plan was to expand the services that we were going to be doing. The plan was to become the preeminent organization in Groton. We are different than New London, where they have professional organizations. They are all nonprofits, but they're also ran by folks that are CEOs that get paid. When you look at our 990, we are all volunteers. Every single dime that you will... That you vote or that you donate to Community Speaks Out goes directly to a building or to a service or to an organization that we help. I do want to point out that we are... We act as a fiduciary with this money. If you vote tonight, and this... All this money, don't feel as if all this money is just going to Community Speaks Out and it disappears. One of the organizations that was actually at the last meeting that was talking about opening up the process, and we do want to open up the process, we do agree with that. They received $7,500 from us this past fiscal year. A Havahouse, other houses, again, if you stay at a house and you got sober living and you were in Groton, Community Speaks Out would have paid $175 per week or $200 per week, whatever the house was going to do. Our budget, and I passed you guys out some numbers down there, $36,473 went to sober living. Now, we are a group that does get our money. The businesses have recognized us. We never received any ARPA funding. We were grassroots. I think you guys voted on a lot of different times to give away ARPA fund money. We weren't even speculating that we could possibly get a building at that point in time. When we saw the money coming through the opiate settlement funds, we realized what could happen. And what did happen is the amount of people that you see in this room tonight... I know a lot of you were scared that everybody was going to speak. You guys have a lot of stories about us and with us, because together, we're recovering together as a community. All the people you see out here attend our events. They come to our bowling. They come... They actually use our facility. What allowed us to stop renting and then buy our own building meant that we could give people the code to the building, where we weren't worried about what the landlord thought, that 30 people had the combination. These are our people. They can open up. They can go in there. They have groups. A women's group was last night. We have a youth group. We have a grief group. We have our regular family member group. Every single Thursday, there's a parents' group. So these are what's happened with that money. Again, we opened up... Last year, they said they were going to open it up to a process. That didn't happen. If you veto it tonight, I don't think that the money gets distributed within this year. And what I can tell you, and what everybody in this room can tell you, is that this money is needed now. It's urgent. We feel like Groton is not an anomaly. It's an anomaly now, because we had less overdoses in New London County. We went down when other towns went up. We feel that it's our connection. We feel it's the things that we are doing as a group. And again, to make you feel comfortable, this money does not die at Community Speaks Out. Other groups get it. It goes right to the community. And next year, when they open up the process, I would love to go through that with everybody. I don't... I even could see it being an open process, but to veto it today and let it go through to next year, that's money that could be spent. That's money, stuff that could happen this year. So again, thank you, guys, for your vote and... Well, thank... Hopefully, your vote. And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Yeah, yeah. Well, again, this is public comment. Your time has expired.
When you said you were...
Again, Ms. Weaver, I... With all due respect, the... Excuse me. I'm going to just ask you to please stop right there. This is the time for public comment. If there's anybody else that's out here that wishes to speak, the floor is yours before I close public petitions. All right. That is that, then. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. It is communications. Just for notification purposes, Dean Shinbra, Lynn Hubbard, Crockett Hubbard, Watson has notified us that they were not going to be in attendance, as well as Superintendent Austin. They're in the middle of negotiations right now, and Town Manager Bert is not here as well. He notified me. Yes, Pulaski, any communications?
Representative Alexis is trying to sign in, and it's not letting her sign in, and she's hoping that we're...
Okay. We'll ask Clerk Melendez and our tech guru to see if we can find them. Okay. She's not on the list right now, so if you could just let her know to try to sign onto the Zoom link. Do you have the Zoom link on you so that you...
I found her on the phone.
Hi. Yeah, can you click... Can you click on the Zoom link and try again, please?
I believe it is blocking foreign countries, and I deeply apologize, but I am present and listening, and I don't know if that counts, but I am really interested in Groton.
Well, you know, I've been here for a very long time. I've never had this one happen before, but if there is an objection to it, I'll entertain that objection. But I appreciate you serving your community all the way in Singapore as you're on assignment for college. All right.
I will be home in Groton permanently as of June 2026, and I am serving as best I can halfway around the world now.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. From the RTM body, are there any other communications that I... That you wanted to share with the community? All right. Okay, moving on. Report from Town Manager will not be this evening, but as you know, Town Manager Bert is very diligent on getting us the financials, as well as any updates that are coming, and I'm sure he will be sending us that email in probably within the day. Okay? And if you have any questions, like always, just reach out to him, and he'll answer those to tweet. All right. Economic development. At last week... Last meeting, we did have individuals coming in, talking about the Pleasant Valley development and economic development, so we do not have one this month. Item H, reporter Superintendent of Schools, as I said, she is not here, but we've been getting multiple emails on what's going on in the Board of Ed and other things like that. You can always take a look at the meetings as well, so I always encourage all of our membership to do so. Community reports. I'm going to just slice down to the nitty-gritty and recognize Chairman S. Powers. We have two agenda items to work on this evening, 688 and 689, please. If you want to read the minutes and you want to do one at a time, like we usually do?
I will do one at a time.
All right. Thank you.
We had a special meeting tonight and was called to order at 6:32 this evening. Representative Dean Shinbra and numbers were excused. I'm going to go through our first item of business. It was 3.12025-688-3, the miniature liquor bottle surcharge revenue use. I'd ask Representative Pulaski to read the resolution into the record for us tonight,
Resolution approving the use of funds collected from a surcharge on miniature liquor bottles, whereas the state of Connecticut enacted a 5-cent surcharge on miniature liquor bottles, often referred to as NIP bottles, through Public Act 21-58, and whereas the funds collected through the surcharge are transferred to the town from which the sale originated. And whereas Public Act 21-58 requires the payments received to be expended on environmental measures intended to reduce the generation of solid waste or reduce the impact of litter caused by such solid waste, and whereas the town of Groton has $94,569 currently in its possession from the surcharge, now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes $72,000 for Public Works for the purchase of solar trash compactors, $8,383 for parks and recreation for the purchase of solar trash compactors, and to provide $14,185 to the city of Groton, and be it further resolved to forward the funding request to the representative town meeting per RTM Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
All right. Motion was moved by Pulaski, seconded by Burrell for item 2025-688, miniature liquor bottle surcharge revenue use. The amount is $94,569. All right. If you want, you can go on with your minutes.
So the committee asked a few questions about what the use of the money was going to be for, how it was planned for cleaning the streets, litters, solar compactors. There's three units that were installed. The unit costs were about $8,000. We receive between $80,000 and $90,000 per year. So we asked Director Hanover, who's here, if anyone has any questions at this time. Ask Mr. Moderator to bring those questions forward.
Okay. What was your... If you don't mind, what was the motion and who voted?
Yep. The motion passed. It was voted 5 to 0 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I open up the floor for discussion. We have Director Hanover from Public Works here on... So if there's any questions from the body, now is that time that you want to discuss it. I'm just going to say, you know, this has happened over the past few years. There's been a lot of purchases made, just in my little sphere of traveling Groton. Down at Deerfield Park, they have a solar compactor there that's right next to the disc golf course. It works phenomenal when I'm picking up litter on the way in and out of the course. No problem at all. You can push the button. You can lift the handle. Problem solved. It's been fantastic. So I'd love to see more in town. Any other discussion on this item? Very well. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2025-688, miniature liquor bottle surcharge revenue use. The amount is $94,569 allocated to the be it resolved on what Pulaski spoke of. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries unanimously, 23 to 0 to 0. Rep. Pirella, did you want to take a seat, or are you happy standing? All right. Got you. I don't want to put you on blast over there, but... All right. I got you, Ben.
So our second item was 3.22025-689-4. It's the opioid settlement revenue use resolution. I'd ask Representative Gardner to read that into the record at this time.
Resolution to distribute opioid settlement funds, whereas the proliferation of improper use of opioids has created a nationwide epidemic, and whereas the town council joined into a settlement against Johnson &amp; Johnson as the manufacturer of opioids, as well as the distributors of opioids, and whereas the town currently has $66,927 in opioid funding, with more likely to be received throughout the year, and whereas the town council has previously awarded opioid funds in past years to Community Speaks Out, a local organization whose mission is to provide education, prevention, and resources to individuals and their families to access treatment and recovery, and whereas the town council wishes to allocate further funding to Community Speaks Out, now therefore be it resolved that the town council awards the existing funding of approximately $66,927, as well as any further funds received in the calendar year 2025, to Community Speaks Out to be utilized per award requirements, and be it further resolved to forward the funding request to the representative town meeting per RTM Rule 6.5.3. So moved.
All right. Motion was moved by Gardner A., seconded by DeGraffinright, 2025-689, opioid settlement re-revenue use, and the amount is $66,927. I open up the floor. Mr. Chair.
So the committee asked a variety of different questions, and President Dela Cruz was there, and Vice President Tammy was there, Mrs. Dela Cruz, and they discussed the plan, how it got started. They discussed that there was 240 response victims this year that they had gone and basically helped, whether it be Narcan or however they go about doing what they're doing. Joe is here to explain even further, if we have any questions that want to be explained at the moment. They explained their revenue sources. We went through some of the paperwork that they had given everyone. We also discussed the overall process. We discussed how the town council has to come up with the application process, and that that's what they were doing. We took a vote, 5 in favor, 0 opposed, 0 abstained.
Okay. Thank you. And again, just want to give some clarification to the body, the people at home. This is a resolution. It differs from an ordinance, so we will not be vetoing this. We are either voting in favor or voting against simple majority rules. There does not need to be a 2/3 vote for vetoing this, so it's just a simple majority. Okay? I open up the floor for discussion on this, and I'll also open up the floor to Mr. Dela Cruz, if he would like to speak to this motion. Sean, you got us set up for a presentation maybe?
Hello, town members. I'm at 77 Oakwood Road and right up the street, and so I helped prepare this, just to kind of give you an overview of basically what Community Speaks Out's efforts have been to address and overcome these opioid challenges and what the town council has empowered us to do with the money. So I just wanted to echo, you know, what Joe said earlier, that, you know, Community Speaks Out is based in Groton, and we're a nonprofit organization run by volunteers. And so essentially, you know, we want to make it clear that our mission is to improve this community and to foster sustainable recovery for all residents by providing education, intervention, and resources to eradicate this damage caused by the opioid crisis. So with that, I'm just going to jump into this. I know we only got a few minutes, so I'm going to make this a high level, and if you have any questions, a lot of the information is in the packets that we passed out to you. Some of the key topics I'll just cover is just the overview of where we are right now in the state in Groton, as well as the town council's response and some positive developments so far, CSO's initiatives, some barriers to recovery, and plans for sustainable recovery and what our recommendations are. So overall, essentially, you know, Connecticut, the reason we are where we are is because there's been a huge increase of overdose deaths. However, since 2022, when Slacker family settled for the distribution of funds, we've started to see a decrease in these deaths. So these resources are helping, and actually, in 2024, we saw a 26% reduction in deaths. Obviously, everyone knows that fentanyl is on the rise too and is becoming a major concern. So one of the things I want to point out here is that even though, you know, we saw a little increase in deaths last year in New London County, overall, you can see on the graph, since 2022, there's been a sharp decrease. And also, within the Legite Health District, we actually... So you could see here where there was 45 and 20, I mean, 63 and 22, and 45 and 24. And specifically for Groton, you know, all the interventions that we've been doing, the town council allocating the money to CSO and us partnering with the community, we've actually have the amount of overdose deaths since 2022. So, you know, with the money's going and it's going out there and it's working. You know, some of the responses, you know, in terms of the money that we're getting, two of the major initiatives that we're doing is we have the CSO hub that Joe said, this is a centralized location that, you know, we're putting together that's going to have a profound impact in the years to come. And this initiative really will strengthen our ability to respond to health crisis, increase our access to education, and basically Groton benefits from the centralized hub because it fills this gap by providing a stable and reliable space to address health disparities, improve access to services, resources, and preventive care. I'm stuck.
Everyone has a handout too, so we don't have to go through the slide.
Yeah. And we'll make sure that we put this for our agenda and in the packet. Community wants to see this, they can see it at home as well.
Absolutely. So, you know, essentially, our main goal is to deliver immediate and long-term addiction support services that are tailored to individuals and families in Groton. You know, we use a real-world approach to ensure that our solutions are effective, and, you know, we're providing a holistic addiction recovery process. One of the major things that I just wanted to emphasize is that year after year, we have seen a huge increase in the amount of services that we've been providing. In 2023, we allocated over $60,000 to, for financial support and services. And in 2024, this rose up to $75,000. So this number keeps increasing year after year. And again, being an all-volunteer organization, all this money is going out, and it's improving the community because, you know, it's going to those most impacted. So just moving forward here, I just, again, just wanted to highlight that, you know, the things that we were really doing just to really kind of help with eradicate the disease here in Groton is that we're creating, we're mobilizing, we're rapid response teams, we're creating this centralized hub, and we're also tailoring recovery services to help those impacted the most. Just lastly, I want to finish up this and just conclude that, you know, Groton's journey through the opioid crisis has been marked by hardship, but also, you know, there's hope and there's also growing success. And the decision by the leaders to allocate these resources to CSO from the recent opioid settlement has proven to be a valuable and critical tool. I mean, this is evidence just by seeing the number of overdose deaths sort of halved in Groton itself. And these resources have allowed CSO to meet the need for immediate services and provide long-term support. It's also empowered CSO to establish a central hub to focus on recovery, introduce solutions to the problem. So by investing in Community Speaks Out, the RTM and town council are helping CSO lay the foundations for a healthier, safer, and more resilient community. So continued commitment from the town leaders and sustained resources from the opioid settlement will be essential to fully eradicating the harm caused by the opioid epidemic, and this will create lasting change for all residents. Thank you. Looks like we're finally back. That is it. So thank you. Again, a lot of this information is already distributed in those packets. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
I just want to say that he's a, Travis Paul is a board member. He introduced himself as a Groton resident first because that's what we are. He is a board member that did an internship and got his degree while he was with us, so, a master's, I should say.
Thank you. All right. So again, our main motion on the floor is 2025-689, opioid settlement revenue use in the amount of $66,927, and it'd be allocated to Community Speaks Out. I open up the floor for discussion for the RTM body for the membership here of CSO. Yes, Representative Fox.
I think I heard that some of these funds are going to New London. I was just wondering how much of the funds would stay here in Groton and how much is distributed to other towns in the area?
Okay. Well, thank you for that question. With addiction, we do ask everybody which town they're from, and the numbers that we gave out were, the 240 total intakes, 82 of those were Groton folks, and 218 actually overall. But our established building this past year was over $300,000 to invest. We made some improvements as well. So that, we really are based in Groton. If you took out the money from the building, I would say most of the opioid funding went into the building and the services that we provide to Groton. We haven't really met the market yet because we own the building now, obviously. But if you count the building, most of the money went to Groton.
Thank you. Any other questions from the RTM body? Yes, Representative Swindell.
Yes, thank you. Full disclosure on myself, I did consulting for two decades with GASP, which, as you all know, was the Groton Adolescent Subuse Prevention Program, which I don't see mentioned in the notes, but in fact, it is the other half of, you know, treatment for drug addiction, preventing it from beginning in the first place. Some of the things we found were the importance of relationship with parents to prevent the use of any substance. Another was the high degree of correlation between the use of so-called initial substances like marijuana with use of stronger things like opioids or other harmful drugs. So my point, I don't know where the finances are these days with GASP. I got a little notice a while back that some of the cuts being made in Washington will affect them, but I'm not sure that has held up. I think that this is all one really related effort, and I think that it would be wise to at least check with GASP and see if, you know, they're running short on funds and that this money in the future, not this time, could be, you know, allocated in part to them for their needs. Carolyn Wilson is the prevention coordinator. So that's my point. I'd like to see at least consideration of the other half of this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Swindell. I would say that Carolyn Wilson was a board member of Community Speaks Out a while back, and we don't see ourselves as competition with GASP or with any of these other folks. What we saw, and again, historical context, was Groton making this monstrous splash, saying that we are going to do something, and it's going to be big. And we're even ahead of where we thought we would be. And it's not by the power of Tammy and I, it's the power of all these people in this room, of our board. We've been able to accomplish some things that have been very, pretty incredible. And we do recommend, we were with the council saying, let's start looking into putting a process in. But I also want to remind everyone that the money just doesn't end and die here. It does get distributed to other groups within our town. And we do work hand in hand. Homeless Hospitality Center was mentioned. I've worked many a times getting money for the Homeless Hospitality Center, working on donations. My own company that I work for, we were able to give them money. We obviously see ourselves as partners, not competition. But this was a genuine effort, I believe, by the town council three years ago to say that we're going to make a difference. And I think the numbers up there really spoke to that tonight, so thank you though.
Yes, you follow up, Representative Swindell?
Thank you. I just, I failed to congratulate you on your, you know, establishing this group that you've got going. I know it was, you know, a personal effort, and I appreciate that. Our family has had issues also, so I'm very aware of it. I also wanted to point out that in case people haven't finished reading the report, it is true that we've had a lot of success in prevention, and I think you can thank Carol and Wilson for that.
Would you like me to ask something?
Representative Wells. And again, I'm sidebarring very quick before I recognize you. We now have 25 members present, and at the last vote, it was actually a 24 to zero to vote, because I forgot Representative Dunn was on the phone. Representative Wells?
We're at 26 now.
26 now, sorry, 26.
I intend to vote against this. I object to the town treating Community Speaks Out as if it were a town department. If it were a town department, they'd be submitting their budget to the town manager back and forth to the council and to us. But that's not what's happening. So I think it should be treated as a charity, and I think they should be, should be coming up with acceptable groups that would accept this money and essentially put out requests for proposals. If, what do you propose? What would you like? How would you spend it? And then we would, we would do it. Nothing, nothing, nothing questioning Joe or their sincerity or hard work or any such thing. It's just that it seems like we've acquired a town department that, without a real oversight over their budget.
Thank you.
I don't know. It used to be, last time around, then-councilor Gajewski said he called around and nobody wanted the money. You know, he made a bunch of phone calls and nobody wanted the money. And I noticed at the public comments at the recent meetings, a couple of people said, you know, we want some money. And that was a public comment, is not exactly how you do the town budget. But let's see, what else? Oh, yeah. I understand you're no longer focusing on under 18 years old and under, because those opioid deaths have gone to the 18, the, what is it, blah, 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 blah. The 15 to 24 range for opioid deaths in the town of Groton is down to four in the last 10 years and one in the year before last. Whereas the bulk of opioid deaths are in the 35 to 48 range. And it's really popular, I was listening to the radio, we got to talk to these kids and convince them, the older folks, their lost cause. If that's the case, we should be giving the money back to Purdue and saying, it ain't your fault. Anyway, well, thank you very much.
All right. Yes, Representative Gardner A., Gardner M., sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I did have some questions during the Finance Committee meeting. There was a concern, there's been so much controversy in the town of Groton that I've seen in the last four years, and it may go longer than that. And so many legal issues that I really wanted Groton to be above reproach and above board in the way we do things. Because everything we do is on YouTube and can be watched by the public, and because the Dela Cruz, Mr. and Mrs. Dela Cruz are pillars of the community and well-liked, it makes it even more important that it not look like, or there not be a perception that there could be backroom dealings going on. I want to be clear that I don't think there are, and obviously, your charity is very effective. You had all these people show up. Frankly, I'm blown away by all the things that you do. And what comforted me were two things. One, that the money that he gets does trickle down to other organizations. And then also, I've been assured that the town council will be considering and supporting opening up an application process next year. With those two things in mind and knowing, because my life has been touched by people with an opioid addiction as well, that the fund, the need for the funds is immediate. I'm going to be supporting this tonight, but it was under those conditions, and I asked those questions during the committee meeting. So if anyone has those concerns, those are the two things that really comforted me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this main motion on the floor?
May I say something?
You may.
Okay. I apologize. I don't like to speak when I can't be seen. Opioid addiction crosses party lines. It affects each neighborhood in the town of Groton. And I think we all need to recognize that this is something we have to support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion on the main motion? Very well, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2025-689, opioid settlement revenue use. The amount is for $66,927. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
No.
One no. Wells, any abstentions? No abstentions. So the motion passes via a vote of 25 in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, Community Speaks Out, for coming and giving us a presentation. And as I mentioned, we'll put this onto the website for the meeting agenda for tonight. So if anybody in the public would like to see what you presented tonight. Thank you very much, and thank you to the community members that came in support of this item. Can we wrap up this approval of minutes, please?
We adjourned at 6:58.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion moved and seconded, moved by S. Powers, seconded by M. Gardner. Any discussion on the minutes? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously, 26 to zero to zero. We do have Frickman here now, too. I'm going to just give it a half a second so we can clear the room, so we can finish All right. Chair Barrell, no committee, no report. All right. Dean Schimbrot, no committee, no report. Rec, no committee, no report. Rules and procedures, no committee, no report. Liaison reports. Did you get anything? Any updates on the golf? Looks beautiful out there, Rep. Wells. All right. You want to just grab the mic, give us an update, please?
Well, it was close to no meeting, no report, no quorum.
Okay.
And so nothing got voted on. However, I may pass on that they are looking for two new resident members of the golf advisory board, so, and one non-resident member of the golf, which would help with the quorum business. And let's see, what else? They alluded to that the planned work on the golf course will go ahead when the special golf, specialist in golf course maintenance and repair set a date. They pick their time and come, and the, I think it's the...
Guys, we got some side chatter going on on both sides of the floor. I'm trying to pay attention to what he's telling us, so if you guys can keep that down, thank you so much.
We didn't discuss it, but I think the work on the bathroom at the, at par four is coming along. In fact, just go out and take a look at it, and you'll see. And otherwise, I do have a July, August revenue report.
Okay. Okay.
And it's 25, the gross revenue is 25% higher than last August, and it's 26% higher than the average of the last four years. So they're doing really very well. It's leveling off, but at a high level.
Did they give a reason at all for that, Rep. Wells? Was it weather? I mean, I know we had a pretty dry spell, so there was lots of golf play throughout that year, that month.
Well, these are fiscal year to date. This is the whole fiscal year. But we have dry, we've had great weather and courses in great shape. So the month-to-month, I try to avoid the month-to-month stuff because we've got a bunch of rainy days in it.
Okay.
You know, and it knocks the stuff in out of it. Let's see, yeah, so it's doing, the golf course is doing very nicely.
Okay, thank you.
Our next meeting is, I believe, November 3rd.
Hopefully, you'll get a quorum for that one, right?
Hopefully, whoever is re-elected, we can still hear my report if I'm back.
Understood. Thank you. Rep. Aubrey, do we have anything going on for Economic Development Committee or Liaison? I guess not. Rep. Massett, was there any opportunity to organize that Board of Ed, City Council, Town Council, RTM?
We have not had a meeting yet.
Okay. And is there any scheduled yet for the future?
I don't think so. But when I find out officially, I will let you know.
Thank you so much, Rep. Massett. All right, any other liaison reports? Okay, great. Budget discussion, any budget discussion about upcoming budgets? Again, we are in September, and if Mr. Manager Town, Town Manager Bert were here, he's going to tell you, in the next month, they're going to start putting those budgets together. So if there's something that you have, that you want him, want to share with him, and directions, and expenditures, and revenues, and all that other good stuff, I would highly recommend you reach out to him because this is the time where they're going to start crunching the numbers and putting that budget book together for next March, when it's due. Anything else? All right. Any other business? Any other, other business? Yes, Representative Gardner M.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm chatty tonight. Does anyone remember what happened with the cannabis funds? Have they already been distributed?
I believe it's still in the hands of the Town Council.
They haven't gone through the Town Council yet?
They haven't come to us yet, no.
Okay.
Because they usually come in threes. It's the opioid, the nip bottles, and the cannabis. We have not received any direction. Actually, I'm going to recognize that you came in at the wrong time, sir. Our ex-officio members, we got a represent, Town Councilor Merritt and Town Councilor Good. Is there any update on the cannabis, on the allocation of that, that fund? Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yes, basically, what we voted on was to move it to the budget process and to help supplement outside agencies and whatever more would be for, you know, special cases that come up.
Understood, thank you.
And we've, are opening up the application process, but that hasn't been finalized yet.
So with that, that piece of it, now we'll see that next May, when we have our budget allocation, and part of that revenue source, which is from the cannabis funds, will be designated because the Town Council declared it as a majority vote that they're going to have it come, be used for outside agencies.
Exactly.
Understood.
And we're planning on opening up how the outside agencies are...
Going to request that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Hope that answers your question, no?
It does, thank you.
All right, any other, other business? All right. Again, before I recognize Agenda Item M, today is the 10th, and let us all be mindful of what tomorrow is, September 11th. And just think of where we were 20-plus years ago on that day, around, between 8:00 and 9:00 AM. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right, motion was moved by someone, seconded by someone else. I think it was, it was the graph, it was Adams, seconded by S. Powers. Any, and we'll just take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?